That's real.
Have attention, have your attention please, turn on all your cell phones, all the traffic devices off please, you must talk to your neighbors, talk outside, you must answer your phones, go outside. Thank you. Everybody need an agenda?
Our plan to call this meeting to order today is Thursday, July 25, 2013, at 7:00 P.M. Our invitation today will be by Reverend Brionex under the C.S. Methodist Church.
Please thank Reverend Brionex. Let us pray. Eternal God, we give you thanks for the life that you have given us, the opportunity to serve you in this community. Help us to do our best, bless us during this meeting of the City Council, bless the community of all people. We are in your hands, and we want to be used by you at your service. Now, the blessing of God the Father, that the Son, and that the Holy Spirit be with us, and with the whole community. Amen. This is it.
We have an established forum, Councilman Neller, Councilman Marone, Councilwoman Castillo, Councilman Guerrero, and Councilman Rodriguez. Now everyone, please stand in U.S.A. positions.
The United States of America, and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited to being just for all.
Okay, at this time, 7:03, we're going to open up the public hearing to gather citizen input on the volunteer annexation petition for the 39.9 acres of land out of the Simonne纳罗cha, eight-leaf grant, abstract one in Wilson County, Texas, and a deed of record involving 1700, page 218, official public records of Wilson County, also commonly known as the McPoys property. At this time, did we have any citizens' comments or questions?
Mayor, just a question, are we skipping citizens' comment at the beginning and then put it back in after the public hearing?
I should have done citizens' comments.
Oh, thank you.
Did anyone have any questions on the other thing? Okay, the public hearing is closed at 7:05. Now we're going to go back to, and I'm sorry that I skipped it, do we have any citizens' comments at this time? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and citizens. Mayor Garza sponsored a check presentation for the fundraiser the Wilson County Patriots held on behalf of the Florisville Parks Foundation at the June 27, 2013, City Council meeting. Doug Jones, Chairman of the Parks Foundation, shared a report that resulted in that check presentation not taking place. Now, with assurance from Doug Jones, the Wilson County Patriots requested Mayor Garza sponsor the check presentation to the Parks Foundation on this July 25, 2013, City Council meeting. The Wilson County Patriots also requested that the mayor sponsor on the agenda, July 30, Florisville City Council Town Hall meeting. Mayor Garza declined on both issues and suggested we do the presentation under citizens' comments. So without further delay, I would like to introduce one of the fundraiser co-chairs, Mary Ann Perahart. We will be presenting the check for $1,030 to the Parks Foundation. Unfortunately, Shelley Jones and Colleen Shanauski, due to prior commitments, were not able to be here. So would the Parks Foundation please come up to accept the check? We are confident you will be good with, good steward of everyone's generosity. Why, who's going to grab this first?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very well.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I also want to mention that due to the involvement of many of the Wilson County Patriots, the visiting, the citizens, and some of the folks on City Council, that's what helped me have success. Wilson County Patriots also are sponsoring a Florisville Town Hall meeting on July 30, from 7 to 9 P.M. The American Legion Hall located at 1412 Forest Street graciously agreed to donate the hall for that event. Everyone is encouraged to attend, interact, ask questions, and continue to strengthen their confidence in their elected representatives in this open forum. Let's continue to build on the foundation of open communication that Mayor Garza and the City Council have worked so hard to establish. Mayor, City Council members, thank you for reaching out to our constituents and participating in this town hall meeting. Councilwoman Maronis and Councilwoman Rodriguez responded they would be unavailable on the third day, but look forward to attending when we do another town hall meeting. Thank you.
Do we have any other citizens' comments at this time? Okay, then we're going to proceed with old business, 2A, Consideration in Action to Approve the Minutes from the meeting of July 11, 2013. If you'd like to have a motion, please.
Mayor, we've approved the minutes from the block.
Thank you, one more second. Can you have a motion by Councilwoman Gudillo, second by Councilwoman Maronis, all in favor? All opposed?
I understand.
And if the motion carries, three. There we go. Now we're going to go on to item 3A, Presentation Updates, Financial Update, May 2013, Detailed Listing, Fund Balances, and Sales Tax Report, and all open.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and citizens. You received your packet, report for the month of May, 2013. And for the month of May, it's a pretty slim month, we didn't have a lot of expenditure, we're still in the middle of not spending, and now that summer's starting to get here, there's more expenses starting to steep up, more activity in parks and the streets. To the general funds, financing sources total to the name, 287,706. This included 356,533 of Irano-Helpert export, 496.25%. Sales tax revenues for the month were 127,186, which was an increase of 10,634, or 9.12 in collections compared to May of 2012. And last month, a question was asked about the percentages, and my memo had written referring to just comparing last year's actual to this year's actual, not an increase in the budget. The budget covers, the budget today are on target, so it's not going to see an additional in what was budgeted. General budget expenditures, total 2,180,970 for the year, or 57.84%. If we were spending everything exactly per eight months at this point, it would be at 67%, so we'd be clear about 10% below effective expenditure. And actually, for the month, for the year, it was 1,315,160, most of that is salary related. Yeah, and it's, most of the departments is really, those significant expenditures, swimming pools starting to have a little bit more expenditure to do with the just open. The Water Sewer Fund, financing sources total 909,696. Water residential and commercial were based total 568,759. Sewer residential and commercial, 237,697. This is actually prior to the ready for export to impact, so the next month in January, the first building has, will be three. It's to happen little past April. Yeah, and very, very little happened in this month. Total expenditures, 840,001 dollars for the year, for doing this, for the budget, for the month development, 27,940. About, a little more than half for the, for salary. And as always, chemicals, sewer plant, utilities, electric, the gas plant as well, as large as it can be. And in this report, we passed a budget amendment in July, on July 11, and this report does not reflect all of those changes that was prior to that, so the next is important. Even actually, the next report won't really reflect the changes, because it'll be June, and the president will come in. That's Garza's fund, same as the dual fund, here, collections are 96.25%. Total property, current handling performance tax is 416,000. We got no expenditures, again, happening, but more than 400,000 that may have happened in Washington.
What question you want, the mayor?
Thank you, Laura, it was easy to follow.
I'm not sure what's going on.
The only thing that, as, when I had, I think, the time, unfortunately, just getting back into the camera, I mean, to go through this with the detail that I wanted to, but when I was scrolling through the, she called it the budget report, I noted regarding the citizen, and the first thing that really jumped out at me was the size of the electric bill for the month of May, being almost $5,800 in electric bill, but then I looked at the total that was spent, and what was budgeted, and that seemed appropriate. I am concerned about that, and hopefully, we have plans, or can look at maybe some ways of reducing that, based on usage, et cetera. But the next item that jumped out on me that just didn't seem to make a lot of sense was janitorial slash building supplies and contract labor cleaning. In the month of May, we spent almost $4,000 on that, and year-to-date, we spent a little over $21,000 in contract labor and cleaning supplies. That seems excessive.
Okay, well, I'm not, I don't, can you give me the line I'm looking at?
Well, if we look at 301, 520, 10710, entitled Janitorial slash Building Supplies, for the current period, we spent $2,215.21 year-to-date, $9,570.27. And then farther down, under 301, 520, 43701, Contract Labor slash Cleaning, for the current period, we spent $1,723.35 and year-to-date, $11,843.75.
There's actually two different lines, the contract labor slash cleaning is the second one you referred to, that's the people that were hired for events, that either concession sells, concession, maybe alcohol, that's the sour limes, that's not actual expenses to a vendor, and also the labor, the people that stay and clean afterwards.
So we haven't separated those two out, so the cleaning, cost of cleaning labor can be separated from the cost of event support selling alcohol and.
Yeah, it's not separated, no, we could, we don't have those two, but they, they clean when, when events happen. They're not cleaning every day, we have a staff person that works with the building.
I was just concerned about the total, 21,000 total seemed kind of excessive for cleaning, but if that includes the other, if you, if we could break that out, I would appreciate that, that way we could.
Well, now, what you mean, the janitorial building is actually supplies of.
Right, I understand, the supplies versus the labor, I mean, if we have contract labor slash cleaning that includes both janitorial services and event services, that's.
Well, they're not janitorial, they're, they're actually people that work through events as well, and they also clean that, they do a lot of that.
Councilwoman Neller, we'll, we'll work with the forehead, that's one of the things that they, they want to look at, to be able to break those things down so it can be real specific on who worked in the concessions or what, I mean, who's actually cleaning. So we'll, we'll do that, as we go along.
I think certainly, when we're looking at the cost of doing business in that facility, we should be able to separate out what it costs to clean it following an event versus what it costs to staff an event, because each event would be a little bit different, and that was just a one red flag that jumped up at me in my first perusal of this budget. Thank you.
Sure, but we'll, we'll work with the board on that.
I'm going to briefly, the sales tax report, I'm going to go over, it shows the current month, 6.5, see the history, it shows the breakdown of street, the city portions, street maintenance, 4A, and 4B, and large payment, and we have divided amongst additional funds. Fund balance, we concluded that one, and this one, I'm just going to briefly mention the names of the funds, if you have some questions. These are the, these are the set of books that the city contains, handles all of the money, and we all, your office, we all sit here, and all on our books, and all these reports we receive, we have the general funds, the debt service fund, street maintenance tax fund, hotel motel tax fund, child safety fund, musical court technology fund, musical court security building fund, state forfeiture fund, recreational fee funds, which is the dollar that is collected on your water bill for, for purpose of grants and, et cetera, to improve parks, the capital project fund, utility fund, refuse fund, cemetery fund, and 4A, and soon will be at 4B, we'll be also, we do numbers, so just to kind of make people out there, those are all sets of different books that the city maintains.
Could you just remind everybody why, you know, you show estimated or the audited fund balances on everything within these reports, with the exception of the hotel motel fund is starting at zero, could you refresh everybody's memory why that's at zero?
We created that in, we did the budget amendment in February.
To separate the fund, and before, those dollars were kept in?
Yes, they're just kept in the general fund, which is, they be done, it's not, but it's just better to be separate.
And there was a transfer from the general fund into the hotel motel tax fund, if it carried anything over.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, now we're going to go on to item 3B, Introduction of the 2013 Court of Broadway Lights. Michelle, second.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Council, and citizens, thank you for having us here today. We have the 2013 Court of Broadway Lights here to meet you all, and to take a picture with you as well. We invite you to the festival, and then October as usual, and Mayor, would you want to talk about the aside we have on the agenda at this moment, or did you want to do that after? Okay, great. We have our queen, Corinne Morosky. Corinne, would you come over and please introduce her report?
Hi, like you said, I am the queen, Corinne Morosky, of the 2013 peanut festival Court of Broadway Lights, and I'm proud to introduce my court, this is my queen, Mason Ray, first runner-up Princess Alyssa Farias, and her prince Joey Garza, Princess Delvee Adams, and her prince PJ Dennis, Princess Caitlin Lawdis, and her prince Derek Utigema, and Princess Caitlin Mills, and her prince Reagan Middleton.
The Councilman, it's okay, we're going to bring up item 4A, I'm sorry. 4E, Consideration in Action to Approve Streets Closures for the 69th Annual Florisville Peanut Festival October 8, 10, 11, and 12, of 2013, that's the thing we have.
I won't, I won't bore you with reading every single detail on the page, but I'm sure you all have seen it, it's the same street closures as we've previously done, with two exceptions. The very first line item, during the day of Uber Games, we would like to just close the side street of C Street, which would run like the side of the courthouse in front of the probation department, just, just to through traffic, if there are vehicles parked there, that's okay, we just want to close it to through traffic for children running back and forth from Uber Games and stuff, we want to keep it safe as possible. And then the very last item, we wanted to close, where we closed C Street, the east side, we wanted to close that, that side, it could be the middle of the street, we wanted to close it at midnight, so Thursday night, Friday morning, as opposed to 8 o'clock in the morning, we always did 8 o'clock in the morning, but people already parked downtown doing, doing their business, and it's hard to get the vehicles out of there, to get the stage in and everything set up, so we wanted to request approval to do that at midnight, to curtail us, having to run people down and find them, and help remove their vehicles, et cetera. So those are the only exceptions, everything else is the exact same as we've done every year.
Just to clarify, you're looking at C Street, the east side of the street, including the middle of the street, parking from second to third street, correct, or is it third to fourth?
It's, it's going to be the side of the street by the probation department to the middle of the street, everybody can still, everybody can still pass by, like, I'll, I'll use the example of Delilah's restaurant, everybody can still pass by on the street, on that street and park, on the side of the restaurants, but the center of the street, as we're setting up with the stage coming in, they need a lot of room and space.
Well, that's what I was just clarifying, because this didn't say where on C Street you were going to be closing it, it just said C Street, east side of the street, as if you were closing all of C Street.
Not the entire thing, no, no, not the entire thing, we close that later in the evening, the entire street, later in the evening, when we get ready to have the dance and whatnot.
So it's, that's actually the east side of the street from third to fourth street?
Correct.
Have the businesses been notified of these street closures?
No, they don't get notified until we get them through, or we No, they don't get notified until we get approval from the council, and then everyone gets notified of our closures, we give them that information about the month of peanut festival, that the street closures, everyone pretty much knows we're doing street closures every year, and we make sure that we put these on all the business doors, or walk them into a business so that people know what we're doing downtown. And then, of course, we publish it in the newspaper as well.
With the number of new businesses and that sort of thing, I would recommend that they get notified before the first of October, when this is actually, this could be occurring within a couple of weeks after that, if we could do that.
Sure.
A little bit more.
Sure, we can do that.
Kindly for the business owner.
I, I don't want to do anything until we get approval from you all first, before we start no signing.
I have one other question that came up last year, and I don't know if it was ever gotten answered back to the council, was a, almost a fence was put up on the west side of C Street that blocked a number of businesses there during the week. Last year, the president that came to the council said, I believe it was Councilman Guerrero that asked the question, was gonna come back to the council and explain what they were gonna do with that fence, and that never occurred. Did you ever get a response to that, Councilman Guerrero?
I did, but I didn't see a problem. I think they, they, they.
I agree with you.
It was hitting, it wasn't a problem, especially.
That was something that happened the previous year before that we didn't want to happen last year. And so we addressed that, and actually, we visited with Councilman Guerrero, the head of the festival, about that as well. But it was a chance meeting downtown, by the way, we didn't plan a meeting with him. We were putting out our posters and setting things up, and we happened to meet him on the street, and we discussed that as well, so, and we're willing to do the same thing again. We don't want to impede any business at all whatsoever, or as little as possible. I know some businesses are affected by the festival, but we're one time here.
I'd like to make the motion to.
I'd like to make the motion to approve this street closure for the 69th annual Florida peanut festival, October 8th, 10th, 11th, and 12th.
We have a motion by Councilman Delivee, seconded by Councilman Modoni, it's all in favor?
Can I amend that motion to say as presented and clarify it as it relates to C Street between third and fourth, because the document doesn't spell that out?
And the documents that are designed, you gotta have that change on there, I've added third to fourth street on the signed document, this will act as well, so they'll be in record.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed? Motion carries, thank you. Thank you very much, we hope to see you all, and welcome to the meeting. Okay, it is okay, but everyone is going to also move up from 4B. Consideration and action to approve proclamation in honor of the 2013 district special all-star tournament champion, boys thirteen and fourteen-year-old team.
The proclamation, proclamation reads as follows. Whereas in recognition of a poor and zero playoff season, and the hard work and dedication of all players, coaches, and parents, whereas the junior boys thirteen, fourteen-year-old team played in a district thirty-one championship on June twentieth, twenty thirteen, whereas the city of Florisville is very proud to be part of the baseball community, now therefore, I, Mayor Diana Garza, by the virtue of authority vested in me, do I hereby claim in honor of the twenty thirteen junior boys special tournament team, witnessed by my hand and seal of the city of Florisville on this twenty-fifth day of July of twenty thirteen.
Mr. Martin, can you introduce everyone?
Yeah, if you don't mind, and they, I did present a banner too, but they had not got a kit, you know, or a turnaround. So I'll start with the coach, Cass Garza, the main manager, he did fantastic job, and I appreciate him working with us. Daniel Verneris, who's the assistant coach, Gilbert Brown, who does assist the coach, Mike Hagan Brown. Um, I doubt they're with him. Great boy. Nathan Delio.
Kyle Talasic, Luke Pierce, Spencer Galway, and Taylor, Taylor Cook, and Tim Nader. Those are all, well, we're listed too far. Nathan Talasic and Bradley Perry, who we have two, I've been making.
I apologize, I hurt to these boys this week, this is what I work for.
Oh, he's the resident.
Madam Mayor, I think this evening has been, been lighting, lightened our entire community from the Wilson Cabin Patriots, from their efforts to support the Parks Foundation, the peanut fest, peanut festival association, and the things that they do for this community, and the success of our youth at Florisville Little League. As a result, I'll make the motion to approve the proclamation in honor of the twenty thirteen district special all-star tournament champions, boys thirteen, fourteen-year-olds.
And a motion by Councilman Allen. Seconded by Councilman Delivee, all in favor? Also, motion carries by the city. Item 4A, we'll go to that first. Three C, board and committee updates, we'll start with a 4A.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council, city staff, and fellow citizens. For those of you who don't know who I am, I'm Melissa Pottle, and I am the vice president of the 4A Board. This is Deb Colley, and she is our treasurer. First of all, we want to thank you for allowing the 4A Board the opportunity to help move the city of Florisville forward. Bill Leeson has asked for myself and the board to keep things running for him while he is out. I ask that you keep coming in your prayers. We are excited to report that we have been working very hard with city staff and learning the ropes of all operating procedures of the event center. Some of us, board members, have been present during events to see exactly how things work, how everything functions as far as events, weddings, boxings, whatever happens at our beautiful center. We have worked towards a directive that you, the council, have given us by working closely with Andy Jocelyn and comptroller Laura Fagans on our upcoming budget. Together, they have provided and made available financial records and materials that have helped us to understand the operating expense of the center. The event center fee schedule is something that we have also presented to you. We have done extensive research of other centers in the surrounding area, and we assure you that the fees that we are proposing are appropriate for our center. Laura Fagans is currently working to put this fee schedule into an ordinance form. When this is all complete, we will bring it back for your final approval. We would also like to invite each of you to join us in the ninth annual Florisville Lafaltes barbecue cook-off. This event is, is held behind the center near the arena. It is the second weekend of November, which is the eighth and the ninth. We are currently working on getting all the sponsorship we need and mailing out the cook-off applications, which is what Mr. Evers handing out to you now. We hope to make this event grow, and we would appreciate the support from our fellow citizens and you, of course. We continue to work in a positive manner to help grow our center in the future. Thank you. Any questions?
Uh, yeah, I wanna be a volunteer for dessert judges.
Yes. We, we will accept, uh, judges for most of those days, we need them on Friday night and on Saturday. Just for those of you who don't know, on Friday, we do a kids' cook-off, which we will need judges for pork chops. We have dessert on Friday, and we have chili on Friday. On Saturday, we have beans, brisket, ribs, and chicken, so by all means, you're all welcome, and I would love to have some judges. I'll put you down, Tom.
Well, I would want to participate, but I would work at the Crystal Cities Pizza Festival.
That same weekend.
And for years I've never.
As long as we have your thoughts, Mr. Martin. Anyone else? Perfect, thank you. Thank you very much.
Now we'll go on to the 4B, FDC Corporation. Mr. Yubak?
Mayor, Council, this is my name, Dan Yubak, and among other things, I'm president of Florisville Economic Development Board. What we're gonna be doing is giving you a brief report of the occurrences of events that made first till today regarding what's going on with Florisville Economic Development Board. We have seven board members, of which one of them right now is acting as head of executive directors. We have projects, work that we've done, and we've had great real estate closings out there, Kuro and Wacho Gradi, that we signed off today. That's your hammer, isolation, and hammer aspiration. The, we also had a closing in a better part for the Whitmire property, construction of new facilities for the land use that they have. This is basically across from the post office. We signed a contract with James Rager with F and W Legal, on property that basically landlocked him to the original conveyance, trying to correct some issues out there for them. So we've got a working relationship there with our contract, trying to rectify that problem. Uh, as far as Wacho Gradi, we were awarded the, by Texas, a permit to ingress the residence. We have researched, awarded, and bid out the project for the evenings out there, and that's a Chapato tank, lack of oil services, they have already started construction, so we hope that's gonna be completed in the next couple of weeks. Continuing at the next project on Wacho Gradi, and that, and Wacho Gradi has consumed quite a bit of our time, we're gonna be looking at trying to put in roads, and what we've done, if we can get Larry Heim, who's an engineering firm with Burry and Martin, to come in and basically do real technical research on existing road bank and road testing out there, to basically find out what we have, the depth, the density, all the things that they search, to try to come in here and lay down, to possibly go out and get access to build it, to pave it. So that's our goal. We, we can, and basically in no expenditure mode, cutting out just almost all expenses as we can, trying to generate funds to possibly pave the path. We have also developed a realtor selection process, where we go by and we select realtors, and we did that, and we have now engaged two realtors to help us provide marketing analysis on a couple of properties that we're considering selling, one being Beer Warehouse, and second one being the two-acre tract out of Wacho Gradi, where the house is located. So at those point in time, we're working on those, getting surveys done, it was never done on the property when they acquired them, so know what we have, so we can let this property settle. Uh, we mowed a lot at the cleaning, the city has helped, uh, go out there and have some leveling with some grading on the, the pipe that was laid by Sunco, they still have the bearings up there, and the birds that we have flapped out, thank the city very much for the hen rock and helping like that. Uh, we mowed them, trying to get them to look a little bit better. Uh, we've also installed three times at Wacho Gradi, to help identify the trees that are out there. We reviewed and reduced the executive drive for our stations that we have, and we're trying to full, fill this full-time position. We basically have a good selection, I've spent some with experience and our education in the area that we do. So I'm gonna say that we've selected that down to a group of paths that we've reached out for to possibly consider continuing on the ingress continuity process. Hope to have that next meeting on that, uh, next week, to continue looking to search to find a full-time executive director. We reached out on the interlocal agreement with the city, and y'all approved that for the accounting purchase, so what we're trying to do is accounting with the FDC, I've done internally, and having to hire part-time people coming in, write checks and things. We've worked that out, thank you again with the city for approving that, so we're going with interlocal agreement to do our accounting work with Laura being able to do, and she only does fourteen now, we didn't think a couple more would be in there. So we're, we're working with the city now to be able to provide a standard accounting book that will be on a similar format, what you've seen, that we can all rectify, it'd be an open record type thing, so if you have a foot to reload it, we'll have a better set of records for it as far. So that's been approved, and we thank you very much. We move to now the real estate, I'm setting up and developing the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen. Which moves it now, we're working on setting up and developing the 2013, 2014 budget. Uh, one of the obstacles we've had this year is we've had a lot of financial proprietary things that jumped up unexpectedly that we didn't know we had commitments far enough. Some of the commitments we have, we know about, such as the Floyd Myers on the insulation of the boring for the sewer line, that's a hundred and twenty-five thousand we have committed on that. And I'm sure they'll be completing that soon and making that draw. So we're happy to participate in that. So we've been very active, had a lot of meetings. My wife had a meeting the other day while I was doing, I took BlackBerry, sending an email, texting during a two-day vacation with my sons and my siblings. And she said, "Bank?" I said, "No." She said, "You're checking, John." And I looked at her, and she said, "You know, FEDC." So we've been in lots and lots of times out there. If y'all have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them. We thank y'all for the privilege of trying and the work presented, the work for a common goal for the city. And I think we're gonna get there with your intelligence and permission to let it continue. If there are any other questions.
And what's the latest on, on your working on, on the runoff, the water runoff?
The retention pond.
What's the latest on that?
Okay, we have actually had a work, a water flow study program that's done and completed. And that has been submitted to the county for the interlocal agreement that was stated back in 2006, 2009, several years ago. They have not come back and approved that. Candidly, what we're working with, if I'm aware of it, City of San Antonio has a program that will actually allow the developer, which is FEDC at any point, if they will allow the downstream landowners, will allow and attempt our water flow. We might should avoid having to put those retention ponds in. Because not only will that retention pond will concede the flow of water to the downstream if they have tanks and things that actually could cause a situation in there. But right now, we're in a process of trying, we know who those people are that's downstream, and we're trying to find them to make contact with them to discuss that. Because it may be something that we can discuss with them, that they will be willing.